This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called. Notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out for our December regular meeting. We are reconvening from executive session and do not have any action coming out of there. So, we will move on to special recognitions. Oh, sorry guys, I got ahead of ourselves. Fritz, sorry about that. Prayer and the pledge, Reverend Hager.
I'm stunned there. Please join me in prayer according to your tradition as I pray according to mine. Heavenly Father, we are grateful that you've allowed us to be here, that you've given us another day of life and health to serve you and to serve our neighbors and serve the parents and childrens of Tyler ISD. Father, in this time of uncertainty and civil unrest and political disturbance and health crisis, Father, we confess it's easy to be distracted and to be maybe even despondent, Father, but we find ourselves in the middle of the Advent season, which is a reminder of how much you love us. Love us so much that you sent your son so that we might have peace with you. So, Fathers, we look to our government to solve our problems, our schools to solve our problems. Father, I pray that we would look to you as our source of hope and our source of wisdom and our guidance. I pray that for this board here tonight, that you'd give us wisdom as we conduct the schools' business and your business. I pray that for our community. We're grateful for your protection of all the students and teachers this semester, Father, that you've been merciful to us and we've experienced much less pain than some of our other school districts around here. So, Father, we're grateful for you for all that you've done for us. We love you. Pray this in the name of my Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Sorry, I tried to skip you there Reverend Hager. Okay, now, we will move on to special recognitions.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our December District Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Mia Snow, a fifth grade student at Owens Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Ayanna Johnson, a ninth grade student at Tyler High School. And at this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected by the display of their unique, outstanding qualities. We believe these qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. First, we would like to recognize Mia Snow, a fifth grader at Owens Elementary. Mia has excelled at displaying many of the seven habits of leader in me campuses. She's an incredibly proactive student and is also a great team player in group activities.
I think my favorite habit is think win-win. I like to like think you, one person like gets something good out of it and then another person gets something good out of it, so they both get something good out of it and it was, they both get a win.
Mia is a member of the Owens Elementary Student Council and maintains excellent grades. She says she does this because it's important to her to be a good student and a good leader.
I think I do like am a leader because I try to get like do all of the seven habits. I try to like be good and maintain my straight A grades and so I try to be the best leader that I can. You have to work well with others and you have to like do all the seven habits and you have to make sure that your grades stay up and you just have to be the best that you can be and just be yourself.
You've been named Elementary Student of the Month for the entire school system. So, out of 9,000 elementary students, you're the top student this month. We're so proud of you. I've heard great things about you as well and congratulations for being named Elementary Student of the Month.
Next, we want to congratulate Ayanna Johnson, a freshman at Tyler High School and our Secondary Student of the Month. Ayanna is a bright, multi-talented student. She is very intelligent and continues to do well in her classes. She attributes this to her participation in the Avid program.
When I was in fifth grade, my social studies teacher, she, she like recommended me to Avid. Like, I didn't know anything about it. It was actually pretty great. It taught me how to stay organized. There's TRF, so it can help me get better grades on my work when I miss a question, so I can understand it better when I see it again.
Ayanna is a passionate artist and dreams of one day being an animator, but her creativity isn't limited to drawing and painting. She's also interested in being an author. Her favorite subject is pre-AP English and she enjoys discussing literary themes with her classmates.
It's like a safe place to go at the end of the day. The students there, they like to express their ideas.
Ayanna, we're very proud of you. There was a lot of great things said about you. You were nominated by your peers here at Tyler High and certainly all the things that you've done, we're excited to have you as our Secondary Student of the Month.
At Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and character. Well done, students. Keep up the good work.
We would also like to congratulate the following students for having their artwork selected for the district Christmas cards. Jonathan Velez, a ninth grade student at Tyler High School, and Natalie Martin, a 10th grade student at Tyler Legacy High School. As you know, this is a tradition that we truly enjoy each year in Tyler ISD and congratulations to these very talented students. Tonight, we also celebrate our district Teacher of the Month, Zach Holston Shower, a seventh grade social studies teacher at Hubbard Middle School. Hubbard Principal Jeffrey Sherman recalls that when he interviewed him for a position at the school when it became open the second semester of last year, that he came in and won the room with his passion for kids and for making a difference. He is now a favorite teacher among students because of his energy, his humor, and his ability to create close relationships. So, congratulations to Mr. Holton Shower. We also want to congratulate two of our exceptional staff at the Career and Technology Center for receiving awards from the Career and Technical Association of Texas. Sarah Jane Walker has been named the Area Three Counselor of the Year and Michael Sturrock has been named Area Three Teacher of the Year. Area Three includes all of Region Seven and Region Eight Education Service Centers. Both of them will now advance to the state level of competition to be held in conjunction with the State Conference in February of 2021, and they will compete against representatives from the remaining areas from across the state of Texas. There's 11 other areas. Congratulations to Ms. Walker and Mr. Sturrock. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody signed up for public participation? We do not. Well, it's unfortunate. We'll just go ahead and move on to our approval of minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting for November 16th of 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion carries. We're moving on to our continuous improvement. Soon now comes portion of this agenda where we're talking about the teacher incentive allotment and we also have an acronym around here for our version of it called the TOP.
Yes, sir.
As the presenters make their way to the table, Dr. Kuratin, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Jones. Okay, social distance, you'll stay right there. That's good. Good call, Rojo. Tonight, we're giving you an update on the teacher incentive allotment. We have locally branded it to the Tyler Optimal Performance Teacher Program. Very apropos, just you know, that top teacher over there, top. So, we're very proud to present the update on this. We were approved for the, for our cohort and Texas Tech looked at all of our data and I'm gonna let our presenters talk about some of the ins and outs of the program.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Good evening, President Washman, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Crawford. It's our pleasure to join you this evening to provide an update on the teacher incentive allotment. So, yes, House Bill Three was passed and resulted in a teacher incentive allotment, which allowed local districts to create and design a designation system that would entice and attract highly effective teachers to our high need areas. Once Tyler ISD was approved, then we decided we were gonna rebrand and that's how we became, came up with TOP Teacher. And it does stand for Tyler Optimal Performance Teacher Program. It just rolls off the tongue. So, TOP Teacher Program was designed to help teachers earn a six-figure salary by establishing a local system to designate the most highly effective teachers and provide incentives for them to teach at our high needs campuses. The amount the designated teacher earns is based on economically disadvantaged number per campus. Allotment ranges for recognized designation is about 6,800 to 8,200. For exemplary designation, about 13,500 to about 16,200. And for mastery designation, about 24,500 to 29,100. Seventy percent of the allotment goes directly to the teacher earning the designation. Twenty percent of the allotment will go back to the campus and divided amongst the other teachers on the campus that the designated teacher is from. And 10% will stay with the district to help maintain the system that we have in place. The above percentages were voted on by TOP Teacher Program Committee in February 2020. Seventy-three percent of the committee was comprised of campus-based employees and 58% was comprised of campus teachers. James and I just want to point out a couple of, a few dates on this slide. The first being August 2020, that is when TEA granted us district approval for our TIA application, which allows this current school year to be our data collection year.
So, after, after this school year is over in June, we'll start analyzing our data and making designations. We'll submit that data to Texas Tech next November, so a little bit under a year from now. And then, we'll have to go through two steps for approval. Our system, our proposal has been approved, but we have a two-step kind of final verification process. The first one is a, just a final approval of the system, just to make sure our T-test evaluations and our student growth measures were valid, and that'll happen in February of next year. And then, we'll have another valid, or approval that has to occur with the designation. So, we'll propose teachers for designations. They have to approve the validity of our system and then they have to approve our designations. They'll do that in April of 2022. So, once they've approved our system in terms of the data and in terms of the designations, then we'll receive the payouts next September. There are four measures used to determine designations. The first is teacher evaluations, so that we'll look at their, there's eight dimensions in Domains Two and Three of the T-test ratings that we will use to come up with an overall score for each teacher. We'll also use student growth, which is based on the Renaissance Assessment, the assessment that we now use in Place a Map. We'll also use STAR scores to evaluate the growth of students, so it's strictly based on growth and not student performance. The important thing with student growth and the teacher evaluations is that those two measures have to be strongly correlated. If we're rating teachers high, their students should have high growth. If we're not rating teachers high, we wouldn't expect their growth to be as, the student growth to be as high. We're also gonna use teacher attendance as a measure to determine designations as well as the student surveys, which give students a say about the climate of the classroom that a teacher provides to the students.
We're currently providing calibration opportunities for all of our campuses. In order for Texas Tech to validate our system, we have to have strong inter-rater reliability amongst our appraisers.
Okay, and then, we want to just talk briefly about where we're at this year and who all's participating. We looked at historical data to determine which campuses we thought would be best to really pilot this program and make sure everything is solid. So, we've identified those six campuses. And then, with the assessments that we're using, which is again Renaissance and then the state STAR test, we identified these four teacher groups as the groups that we could designate appropriately. And it's determined by the fact that we have to use a state or a nationally normed test. So, we can't just pick a test and say, we're gonna designate a teacher based on this. We have to use a very specific test. So, we're looking at K through eighth grade math and reading teachers, our fifth and eighth grade science teachers, and our eighth grade social studies teachers, all potentially being designated based on those four components that we talked about. So, we'll submit that data next November to see, have TA, or I'm sorry, have Texas Tech go over the data and verify its accuracy. And with that, we'll answer any questions if you have them.
We could possibly add one more campus to that. I don't really want to discuss that yet because we, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. But we've been using, obviously, we chose those campuses not just because of, you know, traditionally have they've struggled, even though we've done a lot better with them, but we also have our risk load data about, in our communities, about where the highest risks are as far as those community factors. When you start talking about economic disadvantage-ness, y'all start telling me some more. Let's go, Rojo. I'm just sitting over there looking pretty. Do what?
Crime statistics.
What?
Crime.
Crime. Crime statistics.
Single-family household.
Unemployment.
Unemployment versus employment, high school diploma attainment within that, within the households and things like that. So, we've got, we've done, we've got that. The great thing is that we've done, the school factors, that we, we've really worked on those and we're, we're really improving a lot of those. It's the neighborhood factors that we don't have a lot of control over. That's where we're actually trying to attract these teachers to come to make a little bit more money, a lot more money than what they were. It's, it's six figures in the urban areas, but as you, the further you get away from the urban areas, the more it gets down, but the most that I, one of ours can make would be very close to six figures, up in the eighties, upwards eighties, upper eighties to early nineties or low nineties, I guess, right? So, anyways, I think that's something y'all need to know about. We are looking at adding one more campus to that. Elementary.
Just to make sure I understand, this program is eligible for teachers throughout the district, but they would only get that extra money if they worked on one of these campuses, right?
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct. So, this is incentivization, the commissioner's idea. They really mirrored the, the program in Dallas that's the, what's the acronym over there?
It's the TEI, Teacher.
TEI. Incentive?
Incentive, yeah.
Yeah, TEI. And so, they went TIA and then we went TOP. Tyler ISD.
Which is better.
That's right, it's the TOP. So, yes, sir, the, we're excited about, there's some things in play here that we're really not sure about. One being probably the most influential thing is this upcoming legislative session. You know, depending upon how they rework House Bill Three, because they're gonna have to go into statute and actually rework those formulas if there is a reduction in state aid. It'll be statutory to have to do that and it's, that's through the budget process. And then, the other thing is that we really don't know because it's so fresh, is last Friday's announcement of the STAR test.
Right.
It's something that, that we're, we're gonna have to re-figure out and get some advisement on from TEA about what that's gonna look like since we're talking about longitudinal data on growth especially. So, that'll be something that we'll have to come back to y'all about to give you a report once we are advised on how that's gonna look as far as that goes. Now, we do know that our interim assessments with the Renaissance is included in this. Is that right, Dr. Kuratin?
Correct. Yeah, we're using, we'll use both measures, so if for some reason we lost our, we were concerned about the validity of that two-year measure or however we want to do it, we could drop that out and just use our Renaissance data that we have collected locally.
So, we will have some of that continuum of data gathering from our kiddos. Y'all have already received, I think, the beginning of the year Renaissance data, is that correct, Dr. Hanson? Yeah, we did that at a previous meeting. So, there is some data capturing opportunities here. We sure would love to have STAR available just for this so that we can use that as a gauge on assessment, but that'll be something that we'll have to advise y'all on once we get a little bit firmer data on what that's gonna actually look like this spring.
Question. In light of the, the information come out last Friday, will they be administering the STAR test or they're not gonna use the data to grade the districts? Which?
No, the, so the, it will be up to, well, the districts will proctor, the STARS will be available to be proctor.
Okay.
The test will be.
Okay.
There's some opt-outs in there for, for folks if they don't want to do it. Individual parents, I think, but that's usually the case anyways. That's not, that's nothing that's different as far as that goes. So, my quotes in the paper stay the same. Our expectations are that we believe that assessment is an invaluable part of learning and we want to make sure that we, we have that. And at the same time, it's our full understanding that we're gonna try to go as far as we can and still proctor the STAR as we go forward.
I am pleased to see eighth grade social studies teachers being eligible for TOP designations. My heart is with the social studies teachers.
Good. They deserve to be on there because they can, they can sink your accountability very easily if we don't take care of eighth grade history. And so, in saying that, that is something that they get a little credit for, that they've always been a little bit underappreciated, Dr. Nation.
Yeah.
Like, like you were.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, the designation is already determined that we are a district and we're collecting data from all the campuses or is this just, okay. And, oh, sorry, flipping out.
But you have the pilot camp.
Once that's determined, they'll determine if our teachers meet that requirement and then they'll reimburse based on that?
Correct. So, we'll, we'll just, we'll collect data for everyone in the district, we'll analyze that, and then, we'll look at the, the six or potentially seven campuses, analyze their data as well, make proposed designations. Texas Tech and TA will have to approve those before we can confirm them, so to speak, with the stipend or with a bonus.
Okay. Great.
And TEA flows that through the district where those teachers are working. So, if a teacher gets identified as a master teacher and decides to go work in, let's pick a random district, Luton, Zavoka, or Guthrie, then Guthrie will actually get that money as opposed to Tyler ISD. It follows the teacher to wherever they work. The same thing will happen here. If they receive a master teacher designation in Jim Ned and they decide to come work in Tyler, then they will actually get that here. The districts are just the flow-through, but we do have to manage the actual data collection now that our, that our plan has been approved.
Do we know if any neighboring districts are participating in this program?
You know, Longview was a, was an early adopter of this a few years back. So, they did not have to go through the rigorous program that we had to go through, neither did Dallas, neither did some of the other districts that have kind of vanguarding this. They just was like, they were like, if you had one, you're approved, you're pre-approved. And then, Cohort B was similar. Cohort C is the first one that had to go through the regular process. We were the first East Texas district that I'm aware of that actually chose to go through Cohort C and everyone else kind of got in on the back end. Do you remember, Mr. Jones, we had that big training at Region Seven? Do you know if anyone else opted in? We were ahead of the game. We were, we were pre-prepared because the turnaround on that was, was pretty tight.
It was pretty tight. We were the only one in our area to go C.
Yeah.
Most others are D.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments about our TOP program? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Looking forward to seeing who our TOP guns are. All right. Business, Legal, Finance Consent Agenda. I think we're gonna pull B. We have several gifts and donations, but unless anybody else wants to pull any of these other ones, I'll entertain a motion for A, C, and D before we address B.
Mr. President, I move that we approve A, C, and D.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now, we're coming to our Gifts and Donations portion. We do have several tonight. Excited about our community, as we say every time, we're able to accept these or present these gifts and donations for board acceptance or consideration and possible approval. We have some, some outstanding community partners that are here with us on paper tonight and actually one in the room. Starters, the Genesis Corporation of $5,000 to the Caldwell Arts Academy for harps and dulcimers. There you go. I'm sorry, I have my glasses on. Very excited about the opportunity there to, to support the only arts magnet in East Texas. Everybody can say that they're doing the arts, but we are certainly doing that at Caldwell. Thanks to you, the Genesis Corporation, for providing that opportunity. Another neat, this is, I think, a second time that we've actually had this, but the RW Fair Foundation, $10,000 to fund the Tyler ISD Youth Basketball League that we, this is the second year. Tremendous growth in that program. Over 400 students in grades four through six are participating in that. Great volunteers, mentors in the community that have volunteered to become coaches for our kids. I think at the night of the draft, every coach, every team was stocked with a coach except for one and they've actually found that. So, we're very excited about that. Certainly utilizing the facilities that we have, thanks to the community giving us those. We want to make sure that our kids are using them. So, thank you to the RW Fair Foundation for $10,000. The Tyler ISD Foundation also provided an opportunity for $26,850 to the Career and Tech Center for the purchase of an augmented reality welder. I assume, Mr. Brown, that this is a virtual welder? That's what we kind of like to call it?
This is our virtual welder.
Okay, good. So, certainly, that is some, that is something that is very innovative, on the cusp of, of modern technology and using that instead of having the, the basic welding machines. It certainly doesn't take quite as much room as a, as a welder, a traditional welder does and allows us to have our students exposed to this in a very safe manner as well, but a very instructive manner as well. The last one is for $91,362, the East Texas Communities Foundation for the Tyler ISD Future Fund. We have Kyle Penny tonight here with the East Texas Communities Foundation, who's gonna present y'all with a big check, literally, a big check. And I'm gonna let him say something at the podium just real quick if you don't mind.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, Board. It's been our privilege as a communities foundation to kind of follow the school name change project throughout the months and years. And when that project got officially adopted by the board in July, the Communities Foundation had some donors who were interested in starting to raise money for that, so we set up a fund for that, the TISD, or Tyler ISD Future Fund, and we've been receiving contributions from that since that evening, actually, the evening of July 16th, money started rolling in for that. We started with a goal of 330,000, as, as you all pointed out early in the deliberations about what it might cost to make all those changes. That number's since come down significantly, so if you go to the ETCF website, you'll see our little thermometer has been adjusted to about $134,000 goal. So, we've got $91,000 here tonight, gifts received through last Friday, and there's still, it's not too late to help reach the rest of that goal, $134,000. So, 74 contributions have been received to date. We got about 41,000 to go. We'll keep this open a little bit longer and see if the public will support this and try to help reach that goal, and then, we'll be back and present the balance of that fund. So, thank you for allowing us to present 91,000 tonight.
Wow. And I've got a real check as well.
That's the most important part.
This one's hard to get through the, through the drive-through.
Yeah, I got you. You wanna, let's take a picture of that. For those of y'all that would like to take a picture with the big check, you may. If not, the guy with the Baylor sweater on will be down there doing that, so. Yes.
Okay, well, we are humbled by all of those gifts. East Texas and Tyler specifically has always been a place that has people that love to give, whether it's for a basketball league or a welder or something the district's going through, and we sure do appreciate it.
That's awesome.
Every little bit helps. Okay, so moving on, we'll go on to our Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda. And there's just two items on there, A and B. Did we take a motion to approve?
We need to. We gotta accept the donations.
I'm just trying to skip everything tonight. The important stuff, the prayer, the pledge, accepting money. You know, you guys gotta keep me on my toes and kick me out of here. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for item B.
I move that we approve item B.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now that we've handled that, we can actually move on. And like I said, Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda only has two items on it. And I'll go ahead, unless somebody wants to pull one of those items, and entertain a motion to approve items A and B.
Before we do that, can I get one clarification?
Sure.
Is that called a point of order? I don't know.
Point of order.
I don't know. Mr. Brown on A, is that, has that been a traditional program that we, or is this new, fairly new?
This is new.
Okay.
It's a new certification. The state offers a kind of ability system.
Okay.
Requiring them to apply the training.
Okay, I had a question from a trustee that asked that earlier today and I said I'd make sure to clarify that tonight. Okay.
Okay. Good deal. Any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion on items A and B?
I move to approve items A and B.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfeld. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's have it. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to our Superintendent's Staff Reports.
Items A and B on page 28 and 49 are your quarterly reports, your investment report and your financial executive summary. At this time, we always ask Tasha Bjork to give us just a Cliff Notes version of what you got in there, especially on the investments. And if you have any questions, you're certainly more than welcome to call myself or Ms. Bjork in regard to that. But Ms. Bjork on the investments, how's it, how are we doing?
Well, we're still about to finish last quarter to earn an average of 38 basis points. And we have around 130 million in cash. So we still have five minutes. And then as far as the financials, they are a little different because of the way we started the year with COVID. And if you go to page 50, you'll notice that on our general fund, our revenues are at only 22%, whereas last year at this time they were at 35. The reasoning for that is that the state slowed down the way they pay us. So before we would get about 60% upfront, but we've only gotten about 30% or 40% upfront this year. And then expenditures are down from last year because we had some vacant positions at the start of school that were aides and different things like that that we really didn't need because a lot of the kids weren't in school. So that's why expenditures are down a little bit. Food service is actually doing pretty well because we're feeding the children now through a community feeding program and our revenue is actually going to increase in this program over the rest of the year. And expenditures are down again because he did not fill some positions at the beginning of the year because there weren't as many kids. So he just moved people around to help where we needed them. And so that's really it on finances. If y'all have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Tasha. Okay, moving on to our Pathfinder update.
For the new trustees here, the Pathfinder is the moniker we chose to brand our choice programs here in the district and our innovative programs in the district. On your Governance Monitoring Calendar, this is the section where we'd actually provide a video for you for the actual event that we actually held that celebrated our Pathfinder, a big Christmas event usually at the Career Technology Center. Obviously, this year, we had to do something a little different and we're giving you the preview of that here. No video, but just me talking. Again, we've done the in-person, Christmas-themed event, the Virtual Pathfinder Experience. It's interesting. We did this to open it up to the entire Tyler community for the surrounding community, for those that might, you know, attend school in Brownsburg or Chapel Hill or White House or Lindell to come to see what we have. What we were finding is is a lot of our own people were the ones that were actually attending that. And while it's great to showcase our choice programs for those that might want to transfer into those choice programs, the outreach outside of the district is something that we really are keeping an eye on to see if we want to continue to do this. This is where our choice and innovation schools and our programs are featured, even though every school was representative at the Pathfinder Program. And we've actually moved the event to January to align with our application window for this year. Not saying that's something we're gonna continue to do, but certainly with COVID, we're not gonna pack 1,000-plus people into the Career Technology Center like we usually have. The Virtual Pathfinder for 2021 will feature the Verbal Dual Language Immersion School. We're excited how, Ms. Moody's back there in the back. Good to see you, Ms. Moody, how the enrollment there has actually done fairly well considering we flipped this over to a magnet program with no attendant zone and fairly, I guess it was in the spring, even though we were planning for it and then COVID really ramped up and we were excited about that. Right now, our fledgling middle school portion there has about one class worth of sixth graders, I believe, and so we're excited about the progress we're gonna be able to make there. Caldwell Arts Academy, we are now a full-fledged K8 campus, a very innovative design as far as collecting kindergartners to eighth graders on the same campus. And again, we have them separated. Obviously, we're not mixing eighth graders with kindergartners, but it is something that's very innovative there. Again, the only magnet in East Texas, pure magnet. Our Career Technology Center, even though there's no application to go there, we certainly love featuring that facility. What a modern, forward-thinking, vanguard program that we have here in Tyler, Texas, with the silver building up on Earl Campbell, the top of the hill on Earl Campbell, and doing some great things out of there as well. And then our Early College High School, no one, you'd have to be living in another country to not know what's been occurring over there. Back-to-back years of awarding 80-plus associate's degrees at the same time that we've awarded high school diplomas. It's a really neat program and we've actually had some conversations about how we're going to incorporate some other degree opportunities in there. Ms. Fraser's not here tonight, but Mr. Brown, Mr. Bitter, is Mr. Bitter here or not? He could, oh, there you are behind the podium, could maybe answer. How many associate degrees do we offer? It's not just, it's an associate arts, but, well, I mean, how many, is it eight?
Luton's eight right now that are currently offered.
Yeah, so it's not just your basic associates of arts. You can actually go in there and get your associates in.
Criminal justice, I don't remember all of them.
Right. Yeah, there's a variation there. So it really is a neat opportunity that we have here for students. We're really trying to figure out a way to see what we can do as far as an RN degree coming out of high school. I think that'd be very aggressive, knowing what it takes to get an RN degree. And we're looking at that. It would be a very committed student to be able to do that because it'd have to be someone who wants to go through the summer courses as well. And then that anatomy physiology class is extremely difficult from what I understand. And I remember that from my own daughter taking that class. And then Moore MST Magnet as well. The magnet portion of Moore Middle School is something that we really have great plans for. We had to put a little bit of a pause on it this last year because we were talking about NASA field trips and projects and experiences to go along with some other things that are related to MST. That's Math, Science, and Technology Education. Again, that is a premier school that we've had here in Tyler, Texas for a long time, and we're very excited about that. At the Virtual Pathfinder Event here in January, each school or program will have a virtual booth. There'll be principals and key staff. There'll be live for a live Q and A. Videos on the virtual booth page will actually show the school program overview, a message from the principal, student testimonials, and parent testimonials as well. So we're really doing what we can do to promote what we have here and to still give kids, students, the option to take a look at these schools and transfer in. Here's the timeline. January 1st, 2021. Who's not glad to get to 2021, even though we're still in this mess? 2021, we reboot. Here we go. January 9th is the actual event. March 1st, the application period closes. And then the acceptance notifications will be sent out. And then April 30th, the students, they have about a month for student families to commit to our campuses. And again, these are all aligned. Before this year, we had them all over the place. One application was here, another application was here. We think that's gonna help families, but it's also gonna help district staff. It's gonna help us plan better for our budgets and as far as personnel goes as well. And that's our Pathfinder update for this year. Any questions?
Well, if nobody has any questions or comments for Dr. Crawford on our Pathfinder update, we'll go ahead and move on to Return to School. Pathfinder, it does seem like it'll be a good program. People need to know about what we got going on, so I'm glad we're still trying to showcase it.
And, you know, our constituents are getting younger. Our parents are getting, I'm getting older, they're getting younger. Anyways, that is something that we're looking at as far as the virtual event goes. And we've all lived that for the last year, and I know we're all tired of it if you've had to participate in a lot of the Zoom type of calls, but we're figuring out that our parents like things in their hand that they can see or on a tablet. Yeah, obviously they would like to go to the event, but we do think that our reach is certainly far more out there, I guess, for lack of a better term, than actually having a concrete you come to us. We're actually taking it to our constituents and to the community as far as this virtual event goes. And who wants to, I mean, who's gonna turn down an opportunity to listen to Bobby Markle talk about Caldwell?
I sure know I wouldn't.
Ziggy Stardust. There you go. There you go. Okay, that's good. We're on to the next one. Okay, Mr. Jax has it loaded up for us. The Return to School update. Well, we thought we'd go ahead and bring this up as kind of closing out the first semester for the Return to School. That was Return to Learn, now it's Return to School, and then eventually we're gonna get to Back on Track. And we want to provide some opportunity, some information. Publicly, some of y'all know some of this information that you've asked for and some of you don't. We're presenting it corporately as well to y'all tonight. So there are some new quarantine guidelines. They're updated by the CDC and the TEA. And it's been amazing, the science on this stuff about how they've gone back and forth and back and forth about what they advise you to do and what they don't advise you to do, and they totally switch and you get something different from Dr. Fauci, or then you might get something different from someone else. The state DSHS may come out stronger about something. And then you gotta listen to all the county administrators, not in Smith County, but elsewhere, think that they know what's going on, whether it be in a different state or in a different city in Texas. But now, we're going to students, get a 10-day quarantine, can return to school on the 11th day. It was a 14-day quarantine. Staff, be different. If no symptoms, no quarantine. So if they had an exposure and they don't have symptoms, there is no quarantine. They will have a required daily check-in with a designated person at the building for a temperature and COVID-19 screening. And again, it's all based upon symptomatic stuff. Our commitment and fidelity to wearing our face covering, that is what's been behind this. You're supposed to be wearing your face covering so that you don't expose others. Now that the CDC and TEA have updated their stuff, that's what we're switching to. Remember, the old quarantine days were 14 days for a student to be quarantined and only 10 days for a student that actually had COVID. They've actually gone to 10 and 10, a flat 10. The actual guidelines say 10 days for quarantine, seven days for a test, but it's gonna be pretty difficult to manage all of that. We're not getting a lot of the rapidity, the quickness of a test result here in Smith County like they do in some of the urban places. And so we're just saying a flat 10 so that we don't have to mess with the testing component of this. Some districts are testing themselves, but we're gonna go with the straight 10-day quarantine. Here's something. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act, or colloquially known here internally as FRICA, no longer will be available unless it's extended by the government. I don't know where they're at on coronavirus relief or any type of health policy coming from the feds, but FRICA, the FF-CRA, will no longer be available unless it's extended by a government. Now, remember, this is where they would actually reimburse, is that right there? Is that how they're reimbursing the, no, not the district, but the state for absences? I can't remember what it was, Tasha.
It's just time off.
Just time off.
Nights are paid.
Right. It's paid time off, but somebody's gotta pay for that, and that's the state funding us to pay for them, which it's convoluted, but that's running out. So approved absences, if you do get sick, it will actually come from accrued leave, state or local days, okay? If you're exposed to an on-campus employee or student, individuals will automatically be approved to quarantine and days will not pull from accrued leave. But if you're exposed outside of campus, you're to come to work, and as long as you're asymptomatic and you're doing the health protocols like we're asking you to do, there's not a quarantine. We do have this little caveat here. If we have found that an employee has been in violation of our safety protocol and guidelines, the quarantine days will pull from their accrued leave. Let's give an example. Lunch Buddies. Let's say that we're all together and someone in that group got COVID and we found out that we weren't doing the things like we want you to do during lunch, which is right now, we want you to either be six, you know, well apart in a classroom if you're gonna be eating, or actually we prefer you to do it on our team system to where you could actually do Lunch Buddies virtually in your own classroom. We've actually had some quarantine because they were right up on top of each other with a mask down and somebody got sick. That's a violation of our protocols. If that happens, then your quarantine days will be approved, will be pulled from your accrued leave. In addition, there may be some disciplinary action. We're pretty serious about this. Everybody's talking about the sub issues that are out there, not just in our school system, but across the state. We've had a little bit of, we've had some shenanigans. We've had some people abuse the system to where that's called a little bit of a strain on our campuses as far as subs go. So we want to make sure we're very clear about that with y'all. We will be communicating this to our staff as well. Here's some Return to Learn data as far as how many students were at home on week two of, what does SW1 stand for? I've been here for seven years.
Six Weeks One.
Six Weeks One. Okay. Six Weeks One, that's on August, and I could figure that out, but I just don't know what SW1 was. I guess I could have deducted that. August 21st, we were about 33%. By the end of that, six weeks, we were about, we were almost at eight, or the second six weeks, we were at 18%, or excuse me, week two of the second six weeks, we were only 18% at home. Y'all know the data. And then week two of the six weeks grading period three, on November 13th, we were 5% at home, about 896 students. You may ask, are those quarantined students, are those? You may ask, are those quarantined students, are those attested students, are those COVID students? And I can say yes to all three of those. Those are the actual students that were at home for either quarantine purposes, COVID illness, or had medical attestation. About five percent. So if you think about that, eight hundred ninety-six students across our, however many thousands of classrooms that we have across there, it's, you know, it's not even one student per classroom. Certainly, a lot of that is at the secondary level. We've talked about this before, the board and I have, about how social our secondary students are, especially the high school-age students, a little bit more prone to actually having some of these exposures and some of the illnesses. We think we've been fairly low, especially as compared to our peers in urban settings and mid-urban settings and suburban settings. Feel pretty good about that. District rate amongst students and staff has remained well below one percent this entire year. We debated about what we were going to say right here, we didn't give the exact number, but it's fluctuated so much. It's been very low. And I know it's been reported out there, because anybody that can grab some bandwidth can become a journalist, obviously. I guess I'm a journalist right now, because we've got some bandwidth, right? But we have been below one percent this entire year, been very good about that. We think our protocols and guidelines are working. Where else can you go? In Smith County, we're eight hours a day, five days a week, that's forty hours a week just about. You've got these tight protocols going on. We think that the spike that's going on in Smith County, if everyone would follow some of the protocols that we do have, we wouldn't have as much of a spike. We think our schools are actually doing a pretty good job. Kudos to the campus principals, kudos to the teachers, kudos to the custodials that are doing, custodians that are doing a great job there, but really, we want to give the props up to our teachers and our students and our parents. They're the ones that are really making this work. This last little phrase, diligent in contact tracing. Mr. Jones, do we contact trace fairly well? It's a little inside baseball there between us and Ms. Barber's, oh, she is here tonight. Hello, Ms. Barber. How are you? Yeah, so she's been an angel during this time, and done a heck of a job with her nursing staff. They're taking on something they probably never thought they would ever have to do, ever. And that number that you saw back here of the eight ninety-six, that's our, that's our number because of the great job that our Health Services staff is doing. Most cases have been linked to activities outside the school day, but as y'all know, it's, I mean, athletics, I think, is probably the one that we've identified the most, and Lunch Buddies is where, yeah, they probably got exposed doing those two activities. But a lot of the other things that we're talking about, it's pretty much hard to trace inside the school, so it's linked to, you know, a church, or a quinceaera, or a birthday party, or a Halloween party, or other things that are going on out there. Okay, now, this chart here, all right, Ms. Heinz is probably going to have to help on this. This is the data of, and it's broken down by ethnic demographics, limited to students of learned at home at the end of six weeks one. In other words, if they were at home, what was the failure rate at the end of six weeks one? And this, y'all are familiar with this, well, this is why we brought the students back, who returned to school by week two of the second six weeks. So we brought up, we told them to come back, and this is after the second six weeks, they were, we were already starting to see a drop in failure rates, a significant drop in failure rates amongst all of our students that were actually at home during this period right here. Is that right, Jennifer? Did I say that right? We'll clarify it.
So, the group that you're looking at is students who were at home for the first full six weeks, so the percentages that you're looking at are the failure rate at the end of six weeks one. They returned within that two-week window of the second six weeks, which means they had at least four weeks of in-school instruction. That second percentage is at the end of the second six weeks.
And so, we will have other data for you that will indicate these same students that were at home this first six weeks and what it looks like for the semester. We were really concentrating on them, because we were, they were the ones that were struggling the most, and our failure rates have actually normalized because of that. The total failure rate, that's the at-school and the at-homers. Any questions on this piece right here? I know it's kind of weird getting to this data right here, but there's the.
That's you the negative twenty-six point thirty-eight percent, right?
Hispanic? Yes. They're down twenty-six point thirty-eight percent.
I'm glad that you explained it, because I was really confused.
We struggled with how to put this on a PowerPoint for y'all to convey, and then the data is really focusing on those students that were at home for a full six weeks. And I think this will clarify as we keep moving on and on and on, now that pretty much everybody's back. I think this will kind of normalize as far as how we were packing our report today. There'll be these students that were at home, learned at home, the end of, for a full first six weeks. And there you go, that's that report. What questions may you have?
I appreciate the report. You know, I've probably got more questions regarding this return-to-school data and the COVID data than anything else. One of the things I noticed, which doesn't, let me start with the first one. In regards to when we set up our program, we had talked about temperature checks, and the initial temperature checks that we were taking for the students, if not mistaken, were supposed to be at the campus. I had a question this week as to why we're not doing it initially when they get on the bus, and then the other one was, are they still doing it at the campus?
So, logistically speaking, that was adjusted well early on in the plan. So, temperature checks are to be done at home. That is up to the parents to be able to do that. The reason that they didn't want to do that, for one, it was time. You're talking about putting six hundred kids on an elementary campus and getting them checked at the door would be a problem. The other thing would be inclement weather. The other problem would be jamming everybody up in the, you know, you say social distance, but how long would, how long would the line be? So, guidelines came out, that was our plan originally, but guidelines came out well a long time ago that said that that was to be done and that would be acceptable. CDC and TEA said it'd be acceptable for the home, that's a home responsibility. If they do feel hot, if they get warm at the campus, then they go automatically to the nurse, and the nurse takes that over.
Okay, great. And the second question was, it's not directly related to it, but I was looking at the totals on the live at home versus, I mean, learn at home versus learn at school, and looking at the total numbers, and I was looking at the difference in that total number, wondering what, what are some of the factors that cause these totals to be different? Because we're looking at possibly two hundred between the first row and the second row, and then three hundred between the second row and the third row. And I was, and I assume that students, that's what's attendance, so we're not having.
On the total column?
Right, on that column.
So this is the opening week of school, opening month of school, and usually, you get a bump after Labor Day, which we did, which brought it to this. We've also got a dip in, obviously, pre-K versus K kids, and then you also have some kids that just naturally, we have some natural attrition after this, during this time as well, after that bump of Labor Day, and then some students that elected to homeschool. And then some students that actually elected to go to possibly an online learning system and maybe a private school if they were, if they had, that was few and far between. Most of the students elected at homeschool. And I'm just going to, Ms. Deuce, without getting into a long, drawn-out debate, a lot of the students that elected to go to homeschool did not need to go to homeschool.
Oh, and we know that. No, I was just concerned about lost students in regards to not having adequate information as to how to keep up with them.
Sure. No, we, no, we've got, we know where they're at. We know who these students are and that they were enrolled and they came here, and then what's happened to them since then. In fact, you have to have that. The state requires it. It's called a T-Rex. What is T-Rex for? What stands for the acronym? Texas Records Exchange. So back in the olden days, when Mr. Jones was a principal over there at Franklin Junior High in Dallas ISD, a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, before T-Rex, I mean, I was a high school principal at that same time, before T-Rex, you would have to pretty much fax records back and forth between two campuses, too. So if someone said, I'm going to go, I'm going to withdraw from your school, and I'm going to go to Edinburgh, we'd have to wait for a records request from Edinburgh to come to us before we sent those records. Now, because of how great technology is, it's all handled through the state. So that's the Texas Records Exchange. In other words, if a kid withdraws and says he's going to go to Edinburgh, we may jot that down, but then Edinburgh will actually say, we're enrolling this kid, and they just go grab their records right there from the database. So that's how we know where they've gone, if they've gone somewhere. Like I said, the homeschoolers are the ones that say that they're electing to go to homeschool, and we get appropriate documentation, and they don't really have any other accountability on that about where they're going or what they're doing. But we do have that documented for dropout purposes.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Dr. Crawford?
It's been quite the semester. Proud of our success in getting our kids back, and I'm proud of their success in the classroom, given all the regulations that we're having to deal with. Proud of our teachers, proud of our principals, and proud of you for pulling it off.
Well, the teachers, you know, they're probably the ones that champion the most out of this. There's no doubt about it, because right or wrong, real or unreal, because there is realness about this virus, we know that. They were saturated since last March, we all have been saturated since last March, with media, real and unreal. And, boy, that can really, that can really do a job on your brain. And for our teachers to have the courage to go in there and to do these, their job extremely well, with a lot of information and misinformation thrown their way, has been admirable. Been very proud to be an educator during this time. I'm not the one teaching the kids, but to show up every day and to go teach our kids has been a very courageous thing, and we're very proud of the job our teachers have done here in Tyler, Texas, because you have not, you have not had the issues in Tyler, Texas that you've had in Austin. I'll just go ahead and flat-out say that, and what a great staff and team we've got of teachers here in Tyler, to where we don't have to fight that mess, and very proud of them. They've put their, I had a young man that goes to Annapolis now tell me, you're supposed to be politically indifferent when you attend an academy. That's what he told me last night, and our teachers have put their political differences aside to serve our students, and I really do appreciate that, because it is scary, it is a little concerning out there with the virus. There's no doubt about it, but we've got protocols, and if we follow our protocols, we should be in good shape. Thank you for saying that about our teachers. They're just awesome.
Well, any other questions or comments before we move on to future business? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to future business. Looks like we have a workshop on the fourteenth and a regular meeting on the twenty-first.
We do, and congratulations to the Legacy Red Raiders for their bid to win this last Saturday. Excited about them playing two o'clock, Memorial Stadium in Mesquite this coming Saturday against Cedar Hill. Well-deserved victory, and that's just another thing that we can probably feel good about with all of our programs that we finish seasons out. We didn't cancel any games, and our student athletes stayed healthy, and our coaches stayed healthy for the most, for the most part, and we're celebrating that this Saturday with another playoff opportunity.
Yep, go Raiders. Okay, well, I've forgotten a few things this meeting, but I won't forget to take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.